Please rise for invocation by Councilmember Stahl, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pray with me if you choose. Thank you for the gifts we have been given, for the opportunity to serve you and this community. We ask your blessings on our citizens and those of us who have been called to lead the community in which we live, work, and play, and which we so deeply love. Remind us, because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of today's political debate and division, that we are not only leaders but also servants, and that it is our responsibility to serve the common good of all. Grant us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen, patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good and right and true. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit.
Brian Clark will call the roll.
Councilmember John DeWorke.
Here.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Brazington. Councilmember Russell Stahl.
Here.
Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox White.
Here.
Here are the minutes of August 8th, which will stand approved as submitted unless there are any objections. Seeing none, they are so approved. Well, we have a number of folks who signed up to speak to us tonight, surprise. And what we'll do is we'll do this on the front end, and then we get to the item on the agenda. There'll be a staff report, explanation, and then the council members will discuss the issue. But the first response comes from everyone who's here tonight. We have a three-minute clock on the wall up there, if you'll please observe the three minutes. Does that mean you have to speak your entire three minutes either, by the way? You have that choice. Now, we have a few folks who signed up to speak on a subject other than the zoning matter that's up tonight. And they actually signed up, they must have been quicker on the computer because they all signed up on the front end. So I'm gonna let them have their time up front on other topics. So with that, and we have about, just so you'll know, we have thirty people signed up to speak for thirty minutes. So we'll see how that goes. Okay. First, Susan Crooks. Welcome.
My name is Susan Crooks. I'm the president of Waltz Waltz. I founded our nonprofit here in Greenville on the urging of my son Will, two days after his brother died from a twenty-year struggle with treatment-resistant anxiety. Walt died by suicide three years ago today. We taught together for ten years and called teaching our family business. His kind heart in giving nature earned him nicknames of the Gentle Giant and the Renaissance Man. As a grassroots nonprofit, we are reaching out for your help, you servant leaders. Briefly, Waltz Waltz works to reduce suffering and end the stigma surrounding mental health struggles. We tackle pressing issues through professionally-led programs, the integration of performing and visual arts, the creation of Waltz Waltz stigma-free zones. We work to incorporate mental health wellness into our community. Today, I'm here to invite the city of Greenville to become our very first municipality, to become a Waltz Waltz stigma-free zone. I know you, the council, Mayor Knox, are concerned about our mental health crisis. I hold unto hope that you will see this as another positive initiative to act upon. Waltz Waltz stigma-free zones aim to increase awareness and reduce misconceptions by creating healthier spaces inside and out. These zones pledge to increase awareness of mental health conditions and promise to work to eliminate discrimination within their agency and larger community. They commit to encouraging people to become more mindful of their own and others' mental health. One way that we do this is remind people to take your mental health temperature. In addition, Waltz Waltz stigma-free zones, we have resources, a stigma-free pledge, and many free educational programs that are led by professionals. Through the act of advertising our city as a stigma-free zone, you will inspire public interest in open dialogues about stigmas associated with mental health conditions. The CDC reminds us that at any given time, one in five should look around the room, have a mental health condition at any given time, one in five. In 2020, forty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine people died by suicide. There's 1.2 million suicide attempts each year, and it's the second-leading cause of death for people ten to thirty-four-year-old, thirty-four years old. But we tend not to say the word or talk about it. They say a narrative tells a story, but I only have three minutes. But there's, you know, three beats on a stage, right? That was my son's favorite, the Waltz. Waltz Waltz, wow, this work helps me, but in truth, you never get over losing a child. He was thirty-five, married. The work I do helps me breathe, gives me purpose and strength. I pull out my soapbox and shout, "My son's life mattered as does every life that is lost, every forty seconds to suicide." Each person's struggle is very complex. We tend to make it more simple than it actually is. Stigma adds to suffering, but fighting stigma isn't enough. We must approach mental health with a novel, equitable action. I have power because my son's stories and my son's life mattered. Let's stop dancing around mental health conversations. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Can I, before you, sorry, can you spell that? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Would you send us more information, send the clerk more information on that?
I'm sure we would be glad to support your effort in any way. Thank you for being here. I know it took a lot of courage for you to do that, so thank you. Mr. Jack Logan. I didn't see Jack. Did you see Jack?
He saw me twice, too.
Actually, he signed up twice. Let's see his name on here. Maybe he'll come later then. Okay. I believe everybody else who's signed up to speak has something to do with the Pendleton Street development plans, in which case I'm just going to start with the folks who signed up with us. So with that, Ms. Patricia Kilburg, you're first up. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Pat Kilburg. I'm an artist, and I have had a business in the village of West Greenville on Pendleton Street for eleven years. Today, I want to speak briefly in support of the proposal woven development. And I'm going to read it so I don't miss any of my points, but it is short. "In my opinion, the plans are well thought out and sensitive to preserving the character of Pendleton Street, at the same time bringing more density to the neighborhood. I believe this plan would ensure a lively and thriving commercial corridor on Pendleton Street, and also enrich the social fabric of the whole neighborhood. Artists in the village have contributed to bringing many people to the neighborhood, both locals and tourists, especially through First Friday gallery walks, Greenville Open Studios Weekend, and other events. These visitors patronize shops and restaurants on Pendleton Street. Greenville has long been a city that values its artists, but artists need workspace that is affordable. The woven proposal offers artists and other entrepreneurs commercial space that is affordable. This project would allow me and many others to keep our business in the village. Thank you."
Thank you. Danielle Fontaine. Everybody be sure to speak into the microphone best you can.
Hello, I'm Danielle Fontaine. I'm a resident of downtown Greenville, but I own a home in the village on Abney Street where I have my artist studio, and I intend to start an Artisan Residence program. I'm an architect by training, and I am very much in favor of the woven project. I do want to talk more about the social aspect of it than the architectural aspect of it right now. I would love for the village of Greenville to become a true village again with its own beating heart, as it had when it had its own little general store and gas station and businesses that the villagers could support and participate in. What I find that we have right now, we have a little mini economic boom on Pendleton Street, but I see it as a kind of a life support type of economic boom because it doesn't depend on its own beating heart. It depends on people coming in from outside the village to support most of those businesses. And that is why there's such a high turnover of businesses, and that is why I very much believe that the business's success will decline with time, as all these other fantastic projects that we know will happen in Greenville soon, around Unity Park, on the Lawrence Road corridor, will start, you know, taking the interest of those visitors to the village to go other places. I have seen such decline happen in the little town where I lived when I moved when I was a young teenager. It was a little village on the south shore of Montreal that evolved into a suburb of Montreal in the mid-sixties when suburbia was the big thing. And it was a prized suburb, very popular. People moved there in droves, and the city, the little town, was determined to keep going that way. It promised it would never build anything over three stories tall, and it was in that groove and was going to stay there with blinders on. Other towns around started to notice that suburbia was getting to be a little bit passé, and that there were other things happening, and transformed their towns that had become suburbs, too, into towns with their own beating hearts that would serve their residents as opposed to being dependent on the city. And that is what I would so much love to happen to the village, is to evolve into a village again with its own beating heart, serving its own citizens. I am totally convinced that no matter what happened here today, the village will do well. It has great bones. My question is, will it happen now, ahead of the curve, or in ten, fifteen years, twenty years, way behind the curve when it realizes that it's missed its early opportunity? Thank you.
And Diane, thank you for your service on the commission for so many years. Danielle, start.
Beth Mcfee.
Somebody told me once, who sat through one of these meetings, waiting for their name to be called, so they felt like they were in the dentist's office and people were calling, so I hope no one fills that one.
Hello. My name is Beth Mcfee. My husband Greg and I own the Anchorage Restaurant, and I am here to speak in favor of the woven development. Greg and I have been in the village nearly every day for the last six years, and we have seen the highs and lows of the redevelopment process. At present, aside from the Village Grind, we are the longest-running food and beverage establishment in the village. Our original intention in opening the Anchorage was to create a neighborhood restaurant that would be able to serve a broader range of residents, as well as support the artist community. Unfortunately, that plan was not realized, as we, along with many of our neighbors, were never able to establish a high enough level of foot traffic to our establishments due to a lack of density. The lagging level of residents and office users in the neighborhood, coupled with a lack of parking, has seen growth in our industry pushed towards higher-end establishments. Many affordable food and beverage projects do not work without a greater concentration of people. That is not to say that we have not enjoyed success and that we are not proud of the environment that we have created, but our initial vision has not worked, given the challenges of the neighborhood. Also, in the past six years, I must say that we have noticed over ten food and beverage establishments have both opened and closed. We wholeheartedly believe that the addition of the apartments and townhomes, especially those that consider and implement affordable housing units and artist spaces, should be seen as a positive for economic growth in our node. In some of the discussions we have had with residents of the neighborhood, they have stated that the village has everything that it needs. However, in speaking with business operators from Poe West all the way down Pendleton Street, all of our largest concern is developing enough foot traffic and density is going to be needed in order to convince them to renew their leases and not either close their doors or move to other parts of town with more favorable conditions. Greg and I would like to urge the council to look at the impacts of this project and the bringing the commercial investment to the neighborhood, especially to small locally-owned food and beverage establishments that cannot survive without more patronage. We have enjoyed engaging with the Woodfield team and having them take our concerns and input into consideration as they have planned their development.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Rakan Dras.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Rakan Dras. I'm a commercial broker for Avoson Young, and I am in favor of the woven project that is currently being proposed in the village of West Greenville right now. I started my brokerage career back in 2015, and since then, I've considered myself to be a true friend and advisor to the village, having spent a majority of my time, energy, and focus in this trade area, as well as the whole of West Greenville. Over the years, I have selflessly built and nurtured countless long-lasting relationships within this wonderful community, from landlords to developers, to tenants and artisans, residents and patrons alike, all of which have been so supportive of one another for so long because of one common goal, the greater good. Yet lately, I do not see that common goal being played out, and it's unfortunate. It's unfortunate because some of you are on the other side of this aisle during this hearing tonight. It's unfortunate because this greater good we all want to strive for comes at the price of stability. I have all too often witnessed numerous businesses come and go too soon due to the instability in the area, and this gives me great pause as I wonder why. Upon reflection, the most common denominator that I believe to be true in this turnover is a lack of built-in customer base to help support all of the businesses here, not just some. In order to fulfill the Greenville 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and for the village to continue to thrive as a gem for this community, we must reach an equilibrium on all fronts. There must be a balance, or it will all topple over like a house of cards. Right now, that equilibrium is found in the form of this project and the much-needed residential density it will bring to the area. The saying, "It takes a village," rings truer now than it ever has before. Thank you.
Mr. Rummler. T.J. Rummler. Okay.
What, councilmembers? I am West Greenville. West Greenville's me. I grew up there, and I live there now. My house is located right behind the Center for Educational Equity, or better known to many folks as the boxing program. I love my neighborhood for what it meant to me in my childhood, and I love it still. I love the changes happening in West Greenville, but when I meet people and they say, "Oh, you live in the village?" I'm quick to reply with an important distinction. No, I live in West Greenville. In a news article from January of 2022, fellow West Greenvilleian and a friend of mine, Jalen Elrod, wrote, "There's a difference between West Greenville and the village. It's a difference founded not in location but in perspective, a difference rooted not in just geography but in ideals. It's a difference that beckons us to realize that we're at a defining moment in our city's history where we must make the right choices, the moral choices." And I tend to agree with Mr. Elrod. I don't just live in West Greenville, I also serve there. As a licensed social worker, I serve the families and the students of the community through a program called On Track Greenville. It's a collective impact program that involves Greenville County Schools, United Way, Prisma, and other community partners. One of the key factors we know that impacts all families and all kids' abilities to succeed and achieve educational success is actually stable housing. They need a strong sense of identity, and they must be able to internally answer the question, "Who am I?" And where a person lives and their community, that's a central part of that answer. So systems theory tells us that when you make changes in one part of a community, it's going to have ripple effects. If we do this project, many of West Greenville's longtime residents are going to be uprooted. One of my neighbors was absolutely right recently when, at one of our West Greenville meetings, she said, "Woven is akin to city leaders deciding to put literally a bridge or a road through a historically black neighborhood, because it will divide a community based on the side of the street where you live. Woven would change the aesthetic of the neighborhood, and it would change the heartbeat of our community forever." At our most recent West Greenville community meeting, the developer for woven said, "This project is for the people, but it hasn't been designed for the people." He said that ten to twenty percent of the units will be dedicated to affordable housing, yet that metric was defined as eighty percent of AMI, which we all in this room know that is not truly affordable for the long-term residents of West Greenville, nor the people that I serve. Ultimately, I believe this is a crossroads of values and ideals. We have to answer the question, "Who is West Greenville for?" If you want to be, if we want to be the people, want it to be for the people who have lived there for hundreds of years, or not for the people who have lived there for hundreds of years, approve this project. A lot of the people that are for this project tonight are here for financial reasons, and I can't argue that. But we have to admit, and we have to know that this is going to change the fabric of our community. Most of us are not asking for no changes. We're asking for changes that honor West Greenville, the heart of it, the history of it, and the true heartbeat. Thank you.
Mr. Matt Fledge, or Fleige. Sorry about that.
Hi, my name is Matt Fleige. I'm the Executive Director of Upstate Greenways and Trails Alliance. We're a nonprofit organization that consists of over one hundred and twenty local businesses who wish to expand the network of trails and greenways throughout upstate South Carolina. I'd like to speak in favor of specifically the streetscape portion of the woven development. When we look at new developments in the upstate, we really want to see developments that put pedestrians at the center and create a safer and more vibrant environment for pedestrians and cyclists that create practical transportation options for people from all walks of life. And we really feel that the woven development is a good example of this. They've proposed extra-wide sidewalks and streetscape that will really tie in and build on the walkability of West Greenville. Additionally, West Greenville and this particular development lies at the center of a lot of important parts of both the city and the county's bicycle and pedestrian master plans. So having a development that really feeds into those future trails would be a great asset, and we have, you know, really firm commitment from this developer to make sure that what they do will tie in well to those greater efforts. So again, from the sort of streetscape and pedestrian perspective, we feel like this development is very well done. Thank you.
Mr. Luay. Julian Luay. Yeah.
Good evening. My name's Julian Luay, and I own Rise Bakery on Pendleton Street in the village of West Greenville. I'm here to speak in favor of the woven development. A little bit of my backstory, I bought a home near the Monahan Mill back in 2007, when the only reason anybody came down to the village of West Greenville was for First Fridays. And I used to love coming down there because of the history of the village, and always dreamed of, wow, this place could be so great when or if more things were happening down there. And slowly, that's happened with establishments like the Village Grind and like the Anchorage, and we are seeing growth, which is what led me to open my bakery there, because I wanted to be that neighborhood bakery at the heart of a thriving community. And while our business is great, and we do have a lot of customers that come to the village, a smaller portion of our customer base is actually in the village. And I think this project would bring a lot more density, a lot more foot traffic, where within a hundred yards of our establishment, we would have two hundred and fifty new residences, bringing business and population and density and foot traffic to the village. Now, I think a rising tide lifts all ships, and by bringing more people into the village, it can only help everyone as a whole. So that's my piece of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Virginia Willard. All right, welcome. Welcome.
Hello. I'm kind of short. I stand at my tiptoes. My name is Virginia Willard. I'm a resident of Brandon Mills neighborhood. In fact, my husband and I live in the Brandon Mill and love it there. We haven't lived here that long, but we really feel happy here. We love this neighborhood. It's history. It's small-town feeling. It's diversity. I do like that more and more old mill houses are being restored, and also that some new homes are being built that fit in very nicely with the neighborhood. I expect that development will continue, but like many of my neighbors, I want it to happen responsibly and in keeping with the historic character of our neighborhood. I am not opposed to annexation by the city. I am not opposed to development. I am opposed to the huge apartment building that Woodfield is proposing. It is too massive, too many stories, too many living units, too large a footprint. It does not fit in to the character of the neighborhood. As a rental building, there will be a lot of turnover. It does nothing to promote homeownership in our neighborhood. I understand the desire for more density, but this is too dense. It is too large in scale compared with all the other buildings on the street. Thank you.
Mr. Ackman. Do ask you to restrain your enthusiasm.
I'm Lynn Ackman. I live on Burdette Street, and I wanted to say something on behalf of someone who's lived here for over sixty years. And I've known, I've seen a lot of development, and I've lived in Greenville for over sixty years. I've watched it grow from a small town to a metropolis. I've been fortunate to have known some of the visionaries. Max Heller told me that he regretted tearing down the historic City Hall, and Alister Furman regretted that he destroyed the Furman campus and all the wonderful trees and everything that were there. And I was on the committee to save the Southern Railway Terminal, but they tore it down anyway. Anyway, we have a beautiful governor's school of the arts, thanks to Virginia Aldrich's vision, and Arthur McGill helped make the museum and little theater a reality. Tommy Weich made the Peace Center and neighboring buildings cohesive, and Larry Ackman, my husband, was head of the beautification committee and kept a Minneapolis billboard company from moving here in 1980. You wonder why... You wonder why there are no billboards around, very few anyway. We have an opportunity to preserve some of Greenville's character. When I heard about the two hundred and fifty-unit apartment building was being proposed to the West Village, I was appalled. How could that happen in the middle of the charming Arts District? The historical Flatiron Building has been beautifully restored, nearby Brandon and Woodside Mills have been repurposed. Let's have the integrity of the West Villages, let's save it. I'm afraid there will be another regret, which will be too late to change, too late to smell the roses.
Thank you. Tom King? Mr. King?
Hi, my name is Tom King, I live at thirty-four Burdette Street. My wife and I moved to the Village of West Greenville from Columbus, Georgia in 2018. Decades of professional work informed our decision and in the arts and community revitalization, my own work in construction and real estate. We were attracted to the village's front porch culture, its walkability, diversity, and arts emphasis. We loved its historic scale and character. Woven's proposed plans are the antithesis of the character that attracted us here. We are grateful to Art of Suzanne Wolfe for creating the set of images that all the council people have in front of them, how it, showing how it will sit in its surroundings. A develop of this mass will be the defining feature of the Village of West Greenville. It will transform the village's historic human scale forever. Scale matters, and village scale is an integral part of village character. The proposed plan lends a pair of five-story football fields in the heart of the Village of West Greenville. It will not connect the village center with surrounding neighborhoods, rather constructs a barrier between them. Woven is an institutional development dropped in the center of prized urban village. It has the scale and standard design of apartment develops anywhere. I worked with a developer in Columbus who's done well with a hundred of these projects, including District West on River Street, and I never saw proposals that they would locate something in a location like this. The village should not become an extension of downtown and arterial development, a victim of urban, a victim of urban coarse sprawl. Cities strive to develop urban villages, Greenville has the real deal already here. So we ask the council one to deny the developer's current request for rezoning based on the planning commission's five-to-one recommendation, delay decisions on major projects until they be evaluated under the city's revised development codes of the Land with the Greenville twenty forty comprehensive plan. Consider that all nodes are not the same, the Village of West Greenville is not McAllister Square. We support the city's annexation of the property itself, and we support mixed-use development that is right-sized and adds gentle density to the village center and its surrounding neighborhoods. This three-acre site is where the retail, artist studios, missing middle housing, and shaded public spaces could thrive together and profit developers and communities at the same time. We need the right project in this special location. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joseph Bradley? Joseph Bradley? James Hester?
Hello, my name is James Hester. I am the owner of Holy Smoke Mobile Barbecue. I thought I was asked to come and preach, so I wore my good, my good preaching suit.
You are the best dressed person here tonight, hands down, no one can beat.
Thank you, sir. I will share. I was among the first to be invited by Mr. Michael Watts, to be a part of the West Greenville, the village movement. I didn't see it, so I respectfully decline. I will publicly apologize to him for that. I should have took that building and ran. But our business started there, in West Greenville, on Woodside Avenue to be exact. Everyone has heard about the Pink Church, that commissary behind the Pink Church where my father pastored, is where our business started, seven years ago today. It's when we branded as Holy Smoke. Some very lovely people, some of which are in this room, are very instrumental in helping us do so. We have since graduated to two food trucks and a brick and mortar in Malden, but our heart has always been in West Greenville because economically it was life-changing for us, and two, that's where we worshiped, it's the community we served, and we love it. I am absolutely supportive of that, to the point that if this project does go through, Holy Smoke will be coming home to West Greenville. Thank you so much.
Tracy Martin?
Hello, my name is Tracy Martin, and I'm one of four artists with a studio at the Bank Building Studios in the heart of the Village of West Greenville. Our current studio location is on the site for the proposed woven development. From the start, the developers have brought in the Bank Building Studios artists as consultants for how art and artists can remain at the forefront of this project. We have been a part of several in-person meetings, we have emailed with the team and have submitted our proposals to them. Our ideas have been fully embraced and have helped shape what will be known as the Woven Gallery and Studios in the finished development. I've witnessed the strongest intention from the development team to maintain the feel of the Arts District and to add to what makes the village special. A team of artists have been and will continue to be involved in every stage moving forward. We will be consulting on the gallery and the studio construction, the establishment of public art in both permanent and rotational capacities. This project provides a huge opportunity for Greenville artists moving forward. Not only will a new gallery be established, but with the new studio spaces and the new construction, the restoration of local historical homes, and the micro-retail spaces, there will be room for many new artists and many new creative businesses to move in. Most importantly, the developers know that neighborhoods like the Village of West Greenville lose their character the minute the artists can't afford to be there anymore. They have pledged to keep the rent low for artist studios. No matter what stage of their careers they're in, the artists will be able to stay and work in the village and help, help keep the quality of the art there very high. Developers have issued a signed memorandum of understanding with the artists at the bank building, highlighting their commitment to our collaboration, the acceptance of our design proposal requests, and our established rent amount moving forward. We have no doubt in our minds that every angle of this project is being considered for the good of the future of the village, its residents, and its business owners. My individual perspective as a small business owner and artist is layered. I know that there are concerns for the size of the development, but we desperately need every bit of the growth and the population density there. It is essential for the sustainability of our small businesses, all of us. The fact is, we need these new residents. More clients and customers mean the existing businesses can stay and keep offering their unique products and services to Greenville. The traffic we get now is just enough for most of our businesses and studios to get by, but what we offer is one of a kind, and we're making the village a destination stop for both tourists and locals. We need more, we may not, we need more than that to just get by. We all deserve to thrive. This development will be a big step towards making that happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Charrington Shucker?
One second. Rickon, you're right, this is really hard. It's really hard. Good afternoon, I'm Charrington Shucker, and I live at thirty-six Burdette Street. I co-own twelve sixty-six Pendleton Street with my husband Darren Gurkey. I support the annexation of these parcels to support the growth of the city and enhance services for the residents. I'm opposed to rezoning the parcels to planned development for the following reasons. In a prior conversation, one investor asked me, "Why do you care? You live on Burdette Street." I care because the businesses and residents have a symbiotic relationship. Neither group operates on an island. We must take into consideration both sides of the equation. I care because woven, as proposed, will be an accelerant to more Black and minority families leaving the city of Greenville. I care because this project sits on twelve parcels with a market value totaling one point six million. This development is two point nine acres, one and a half miles from downtown, and the land's taxable value is only one point six nine, one point six million. These are not downtown land prices, they don't require a downtown eighty-million-dollar investment. I care because we maintain and can maintain the spatial integrity of the historic communities and create missing middle housing, two-story live workspaces, and owner-occupied artist retail. I care because we can build a project that works with the community to diversify the ownership and contribute to the wealth creation for middle-class families, working artists, and small business owners. I care because on this property, we can achieve a thoughtful, mixed-use development that will add to the revitalization of West Greenville, fuel the organic growth of the neighborhoods, and value small businesses by offering you a permanent home in the community. I urge you not to rezone these parcels and require the development, developer to engage the whole community in the redesign of this project.
Thank you. Darren? He signed up right after.
My name is Darren Gurkey, I'm a commercial real estate owner and business owner in the Village of West Greenville. My family and I also reside in West Greenville, two blocks away from the commercial core of the village. I'm opposed to rezoning of this property to PD because as currently planned, the woven development will completely overwhelm the Village of West Greenville. As a business owner in the village, I am in favor of dense mixed-use development that is appropriate in character and scale to the existing village. Over the last thirty years, I've worked in 3D design as an educator and an artist, and the pottery I've created in the village for the last eight years has been inspired and informed by the history of my craft. Understanding and appreciating your history is part of being a good craftsman. Lately, I've been concerned about Greenville's history as I watch new developments push important historical structures aside just to dwarf them in scale and visually diminish their significance. If allowed, woven will continue this trend by not only pushing aside historical structures but also concealing any view of the hundred-and-twenty-year-old Brandon Mill, a mill that is enjoying a second life because of the craftsmanship that went into its design and construction. Just this morning, I read that Greenville is now one of the best places in the world to visit this fall. Every week, our city is recognized and celebrated nationally for its many attributes. As we all know, Greenville is a desirable place, not just to residents and tourists but also to developers. As leaders of Greenville, you all have the power to hold these developers to a higher standard and raise the bar. We need to make sure that these new developments are enhancing our surroundings and inviting the existing community to interact. Most importantly, we need developments that will integrate and celebrate Greenville's history. In a city made famous for textiles, we must make sure that as we grow, we make weaving new development into our existing communities a top priority. According to the woven plans, the Pendleton-facing portions are nice and welcoming and inviting because of the warmth of the brick and the setbacks. The rear three-quarters of the building appear to be a barrier defending the village from the Brandon Mill community. A design welcoming Brandon Mill and Mill Home residents into the village as originally intended will benefit both the community and the village businesses. As we speak, investors and developers are accumulating property in and around the village. If we allow downtown-sized developments in our neighborhood, how will we maintain the Village of West Greenville's unique personality? Please honor the thoughtful five-to-one decision of the planning commission and deny rezoning. Thank you.
Kenzie Biggins?
Good evening, my name is Kenzie Biggins, and I live and work at twenty-eight Burdette Street in the Village of West Greenville. I moved to Greenville to grow my small business. I moved to the Village of West Greenville because my husband and I needed an affordable place to live in a walkable community where we could maintain our one-car lifestyle. Right after we moved to the village, one of the investors in this project invited me to coffee and asked me, "What do we need to do to add more diverse business owners to the village?" In response, I specifically asked, "Did he mean presenting the opportunity for diverse business owners to buy their own property to help establish generational wealth and control their futures, or did he mean having minorities continue to rent from him?" This project is a reflection of that conversation. Once again, minorities will be allowed to rent, but not own space for their retail and for their business, or missile, missing middle housing to control their long-term outcomes in the city of Greenville, therefore keeping them in the city of Greenville. I'm opposed to this project for a number of reasons, including those cited by the planning commission, of mass and density. But when it gets down to it, this simply is not the right development for my neighborhood. There is an opportunity to build something special that not only fits the history and scale of the neighborhood, but is also meaningful to the long-term outcomes of Greenville business owners and residents. I want to be clear, because I know that there have been some mistruths out there. My neighbors and I support development and density in our neighborhood. We want to see more commercial spaces, we want to see more places for people to live. Like I said, I'm one-car. I need to be able to walk around my neighborhood and get things done, but we want it done in a smart and meaningful way. I want to see it done in a way that does not remind me of Atlanta, that I left to move here to escape the overdevelopment and misuse of land and disrespect of the historical neighborhoods. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Ryan Johnson? You're next.
Hello, my name is Ryan Johnston. Thank you for the opportunity to come speak to you tonight. Also wanted to say thank you for this, to the city of Greenville, who's played a very active role in working to help us beautify the streets through the streetscape improvements. And as many of you that have dealt with my emails or phone calls have over the last seven years, one thing is, is clear, is that I am passionate about the Village of West Greenville. I also participated in the twenty forty plan, as well as the village micro-plan, and have been part of the small business, the Villages of West Greenville's Business Association for the last seven years. One thing that I have tried to do is listen and ask questions. Since moving community journals out there with my family over seven years ago, a lot of what we've done is say what's missing. Where and how can we very intentionally identify these gaps to build something that fifteen, twenty, thirty years from now is truly a case study in what, what celebrates, what makes Greenville unique, and does more of that so that, so that when we look back on this, this is truly a case study for celebrating growth and being inclusive? And so what does that mean to be inclusive? It's, it's, this project, when I, when I was listening to the community and heard all these things, you talk about hard, hard is figuring out how to cram all these desires and wants and that are balanced into something to make everyone as happy and, and, and successful as possible. So one of the things that I provided on behalf of a bunch of the property owners was the over thirty different individual commercial properties that the owners have signed a letter of support for this project specifically, saying, because they're listening to their tenants, that aren't all thriving, that aren't all just trying to get by, that aren't all just trying to have a destination for other people to drive in and out of the village. So that's one thing that we listened to. Another thing we listened to is, and you're right, all nodes are not created equal, which is why the small-area micro-plan specifically talks about that this node needs to maintain the historic nature of the properties. Well, because of that, we only have one or two sites that can handle density, and this is one of them. And so trying to figure out how to get the commercial- And so trying to figure out how to get the commercial affordability, which we've done for inclusive representative retail, the artist growth to ensure that artists aren't just sustained, but we grow upon that, as mentioned earlier, and to, and to deliver 36 public spaces, a huge pocket park, tons of oversized inviting public places to activate the corridor, this project can't afford to not get it right. And for, and I, I have been adamantly and passionately involved to make sure that this was done with as much intentionality as possible. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Margaret McGinnity. My address is 104 Mason Street. I've lived at 104 Mason Street in the Brandon neighborhood since 2007, and for the last 15 years, I've watched the revitalization that has taken place there with the restoration of existing structures such as the Brandon Mill and the buildings of the business district on Pendleton Street, all done in a way that preserves and enhances the integrity of the neighborhood while allowing new ventures to flourish. Among many reasons to object to the woven project is that it will consume the green space between Smith, Pendleton, and Seaco streets that, while privately owned, has been publicly appreciated. It has, in effect, been a village green for the village of West Greenville, serving as an informal playground, picnic area, and festival site. Before making the irreversible decision to destroy this park-like open space and a significant number of old-growth trees, as well as needlessly tearing down a repurposed quirky old bank building and relocating several historic mill houses, I would ask that the city think long and hard. In a perfect world, this property would, through some public-private partnership, be preserved as an open green space because those with foresight realize that green space in an open, in an urban area is a powerful draw, as Unity Park has so emphatically demonstrated. We have an opportunity to create a park in our village, ideally situated and in keeping with the scale we desire to maintain there. Ideals aside, this property, of course, will be developed, but its location at the very heart of the village deserves a very well-considered plan if the city intends to keep advertising West Greenville as unique, retro, artsy, the qualities that attracted me to it 15 years ago and that have attracted many others since then. I ask you then to pause and acknowledge that there are many, much better, more harmonious ways for this particular spot to be developed and not to just jump on the first thing that comes along. What is the hurry, after all? Profit for a certain demographic that has come to our neighborhood to earn a profit? Not, it's not going to, it's not an urgent matter for those of us who live there. The Green Downtown and the Riverside Apartments near the Swamp Rabbit Cafe are two woodfield projects that exemplify the massive scale of their product. Developments like that may belong somewhere, but they do not belong in the middle of Greenville's nationally-known, utterly charming, funky, human-scale arts village. Thank you.
Barbara Cast, oh, there.
And for the record, we have Councilmember Brasington joining us at this time. Thank you, sir.
My name is Barbara Castaneda, and I'm one of the four artists from the bank building studios. We're located at 1279 Pendleton Street, and I'm here to speak in favor of the woven development. I'm excited about the opportunities this development means for the future of our arts district. My studio mates and I have been very impressed with the communication we have received from the woven developers from the start. From the beginning of our conversations, we could see the good in what they were trying to do for the village. Before I even had the chance to mention it in our first meeting, they talked about the importance of keeping working artists in the village. They said that they want this project, project to prioritize artists and to promote growth by highlighting and attracting more art and artists to the area. They realize that artists are a huge part of the identity of the village and that too often developments come into arts districts and begin, and begin the slow process of pricing artists out of the area. Hearing their intentions to keep this from happening made me have confidence in their project. Like so many other artists I've seen at firsthand, in the early 2000s, as an art student, I lived in Charlotte and worked as an art assistant in the North Davidson area, also known as NODA. Artists moved into the abandoned warehouses and old homes and revived the neighborhood. The trend caught on, and a number of unique small businesses and restaurants came to join the artists in the area. When it became trendy, condos were built, and the next thing we knew, the artists couldn't afford to have their studios there anymore, or their buildings were torn down and they were left with nowhere to go. Thankfully, this plan keeps us in consideration. My studio mates all have similar stories to, of places they've lived and worked before. Well, Tina Christophilus is one of our studio mates who couldn't be here tonight, but she has lived and worked recently in New York and Boston and saw the success and growth of neighborhood arts districts in both places. She choose, she chose to move back to Greenville and set up her studio in the village because of the personality and the potential of the area. My studio mates and I share the vision of the developers to maintain the growth, maintain and grow the presence of artists in the village. Not only will the woven development bring in much-needed clients and customers for all of us, it will provide many new spaces for more artists and creative entrepreneurs to set up their small businesses. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Steve Pace? Mr. Pace? I think everyone should stand for Mr. Pace. He's, I think he's the mayor of West Greenville.
No chance. Thank you, Mayor Wyatt, council members. Steve Pace is my name, and my father started Pace Jewelers in 1948 in West Greenville. So we've been there for 74 years and have loved every minute of it. Have some ups and downs, though, in the community, and the vitality of the businesses in the area have, have changed through the years. During the 50s, 60s, 70s, and early 80s, most businesses in West Greenville were very successful, due either directly or indirectly to the textile industry. In the 90s, things began to change, for some in the business community, due to various factors, some being increased competition from shopping centers and malls, retirement of some shop owners, lack of adequate parking, and neglect from some property owners of their buildings. When the North American Free Trade Agreement was passed and textile mills began closing in the 90s, things really got bad for many businesses in West Greenville. The fact that we owned the parking lot beside our store was the main reason I decided to stay and hope for better times ahead. Fortunately, our customer base was from a pretty wide area of Greenville and Pickens Counties. Unfortunately, during the late 90s and early 2000s, West Greenville was not the most sought-after destination, especially after dark with increased crime, vandalism, and drug deals going on in the streets and houses of West Greenville. In the mid-2000s, things began to turn around with the help of the West Greenville Business Association, the Greenville Revitalization Plans, and the artists who came to the area to open their businesses in the, in the buildings. It was a slow process for a while, for many years, but the last five years have seen steady improvement in the business community with a wide variety of new businesses moving to our area. Homes in the area are being bought and updated by young couples, and the conversion of the textile mills to apartments have brought a strong vitality back to the West Greenville village. Business for us has never been better with a huge increase in business last year over 2020, and not primarily because of the pandemic. West Greenville is again how it was when I first started work at the jewelry store 50 years ago. People happily walking the streets with their families and four-legged friends, shopping, eating, and enjoying the friendly atmosphere of our community. Pace Jewelry staff and family wholeheartedly approve of the woven project and the continued vitality it will bring the community as a whole. It's a very sound concept with ample parking for the residents and businesses of woven. Being able to walk from home to the business community is a win-win for everyone.
Alan Mitchell? Here, I saw him back there. There he goes.
Good evening. My name is Alan Mitchell. I live at 212 Rebecca Street in Greenville, and I am a neighborhood president. I am here to support both sides of this project, actually.
There we go.
The reason I say that is because, as a neighborhood president, I know the strife that the residents go through, but I also know the hardships that the businesses go through. I would say to council that you really do need to listen to the residents as they plead to you to come up with a plan that is workable for both sides and see what you can do to make the woven project a workable project. It doesn't have to be forced down the throats of the residents, especially the long-term residents, and it doesn't have to be a pinnacle that you build so that it just draws people into Greenville to see the new Greenville. So I ask you to take a little bit more time, reconsider what you're doing, listen openly with what the residents have to say, and that's all I have for my presentation. However, Mrs. Norris did sign up, and I would like to go ahead and read her statement.
Okay, sure.
Here.
Okay.
This is from Councilwoman Norris from County Council. She says, "Good evening, city council members, mayor, city manager, and city staff. I represent the county residents that will be directly impacted by the proposed woven development. I have heard loud and clear that the residents desire to be annexed but do not want the property rezoned. Who wants to live beside a 70-foot building that boxes them in? The project will alter the fabric of one of Greenville's historic communities. The project plan did not consult neighborhood residents on the needs of the community. The residents want to see the property used for missing middle housing, owner-occupied retail, and support gentle density. I believe all proposed development must maintain the integrity of the historical architecture, involve the residential neighbors, and preserve the character of the West Greenville community. I urge you to vote no on this project tonight." Zanthine S. Norris, Greenville County Councilwoman, District 23.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments and all that. And we look forward to your service on County Council, Mr. Mitchell. Andre Camargo? Camargo? Yes, Andre.
Hey, good evening. I know many of you guys hope tomorrow I will see you on the shop, even if you disagree with me. Love you all. I'm here representing my business, Andres Camargo. I own Unlock Coffee Roasters. We are right there in the middle of the village. We opened our business in 2020, March. We opened in Shadowner Doors as well. We couldn't do any business during that time. So my wife and I, we had to decide to stay here, to continue pursuit, believe that some, at some point, this area and this, this business is going to be profitable, and we decided to stay, decide to say, whatever it takes, we're going to stay there because we believe that this is the area of diversity. That's why we are there. We're probably one of the few Hispanic businesses on right there, probably the only Hispanic owning a coffee shop and roastery, and we want to stay there. However, the reality is, is different. We, we lock in traffic many days where we can even see the traffic we need to stay in business. And I don't call this my business, this is my home. I spend nine, 10 hours a day. I live there more than I live in my house. I spend 60 hours a week. I know everybody. I, I talk to everybody. I open doors on my business to community, and I want to stay there. But it's a certain point when you go back to your numbers and the reality is older. What's the reality of the village? We love it. We love the culture. We love the diversity, but if any business is not profitable, it's going to move, it's going to look for a different space, it's going to look for all their opportunities because you can't sacrifice your family, you can sacrifice five other families of the people I'm employing there and promise them a better pay rate, when you can't. You can't compete with a big industry, you can't compete, and if we don't have this project going, eventually the message you're sending out there for small businesses is this, it's a ceiling, it's a limit. The village is not for business to be profitable or maybe to just be making certain revenue that you can stay there. So all the investment you're doing, all the effort you're doing to stay there and also to help the community, to help the economy part to continue growing, you start moving those businesses away from this area. And yes, I know people is concerned about what's going on. I know people is concerned about, and there are positive and negative things always in life, it's that, negative and positive. You gotta just put both together and see what has been positive in the last five years in the village. It's been the business coming in development and bringing so much positive stuff, and what's is negative, in some point in life, you just decide it's a positive, better, and, and brings prosperity and brings businesses and diversity. If it's not, then you made a decision based on that. But tonight, I can tell you this, if two years from now, I decide to move my business from the village and no closing during the pandemic, it's a huge message out there, negative message for small business owners. Don't bring your business to the village because it's a ceiling of development and it's a shutdown when you're trying to continue development and prosperity in this area. Thank you.
Mr. DeWorke? Do you want to? No. Anes Morris?
I'm Anes Morris. I live at Fort Queen Alley. I'm a resident of the West Greenville neighborhood, and I come behalf of, on behalf of the West Greenville neighborhood against this project. West Greenville continues to grow and change. Gentrification continues to move forward, changing the trajectory of the neighborhood. Reverend Roger Fleming, who has worked with the city, Homes of Hope, Habitat for Humanity, to get affordable housing in the West Greenville neighborhood, and a project such as the woven only increases housing prices and taxes. It makes it difficult for the average person with a 30% to 60% AMI to rent or buy. Having this project will change the future of housing in West Greenville and does not help most of our current residents. It also will increase traffic in and throughout, through the neighborhood, which is already happening due to the cut-through of Queen Street, over the Queen Street Bridge to Unity Park. Not that I'm against that, I love Unity Park, it's wonderful, but we do see an increase in traffic in our neighborhood, and the increase in traffic where people are actually driving faster through the neighborhood, which affects our children and those who walk and bicycle in the neighborhood. So when this happens, we continue to see growth, and our residents continue to feel pushed out. Therefore, I ask that the city, that city council say no to this project. Thank you.
Craig Kinley? Craig Kinley? Sir?
Hey, how are you? Good evening. My name's Craig Kinley. Thank you for affording me the right to speak on the woven project this evening. I'm in favor of the woven project after consideration and discussion with my bride, that is a historic preservation master's degree. We've worked in Savannah and Chicago on many projects in both of those down, down historic areas. I'm the founder and owner of the Grouler House at 12 Lois Avenue. We have been in the village since 2015, supporting the Friday Night Music Series and invested in and opened in August the 28th of 2017. All of us went through the pandemic challenges, and we squeaked through to live another day. Post the pandemic, we saw activity pick up in the community mill residents and validates the need for continued walkable traffic, growth, and sustainability for the business and community in the village of West Greenville. As we further consider the woven mill project, we look towards a collaborative and considerate approach where the village may slide back to the years that it was 10 to 15 years ago. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Jack Olson.
My name is Jack Olson. I start the day at Unlock with my coffee and the day at the Growler House for a beer. I walk to both. I live in the Brandon Mill. My wife and I moved here about three years ago. I have a little different perspective to offer. I lived in Portland, Oregon for 30 years, moved there when it was beginning to really, well, we moved in at a point when there was more outmigration than inmigration in Oregon. And I saw it start out as a very charming, very inviting town, much like Greenville is now. And it became the poster child for growth. People came from around the country and world to see what Portland was doing. You can get, you can fall in love with growth, and then you have at some point the question, growth at what price? What are we giving up? What are we willing to destroy in order to accommodate growth? Portland, I think, has gone over that edge. Portland is not what it was. It has grown too much, too fast. It's not what it was. And my hope is that Greenville will have the good sense to figure out when to put the brake on. I was struck by a comment that Mr. Johnston made about celebrate what makes Greenville unique. From an outsider, my perspective is what makes Greenville unique is mill villages and the mills and the water towers. That's one of the most unique things you have to offer. And I hope that the council, you plus the future, will do everything you can to preserve and accommodate those mills and the mill villages such as Brandon Mill. It seems to me, the question becomes, what are you willing to destroy to accommodate growth? Because my perspective is, if you destroy the Brandon Mill Village, you've lost it forever, and that's a big mistake. And also from my perspective, five stories, five stories, it's a huge building. It's a blight. Are you willing to throw the Mill Village under the bus to accommodate that kind of density? That's the question. That's the question. And I hope you have the sense to say no.
Thank you. Welcome to Greenville, too, by the way. Appreciate it. And Mr. Brian Schick, you were the last one to sign up, so you heard a lot, so you can happy to respond.
So I'm going to try to be brief because I, as the applicant understands, only have three minutes as well. So I'm going to let the staff address, read through the project, and be happy to step back up. And I have my entire design team here as well that can answer any technical questions that you may have. Thank you for allowing us to be here. This would be Woodfield's fifth project in Greenville, and we're still very bullish on Greenville. And yes, Greenville's been discovered, and I think that's part of what we're kind of struggling with tonight because it's a town where the former boss, Carol Gray, who was the president of the Greenville Chamber, used to say that elevator's going up in Greenville. And I think cities struggle with growing pains, but there's really only two types of cities. And I think a former mayor of Greenville, Mr. Workman, used to say that you can either struggle with growing pains or struggle with dying pains. And there's plenty of stories of cities in this country that are struggling with the dying pains. And I know we've leased up Riverside Apartments, which we just are on a future docket to annex it to the city, 200 units on Hampton Avenue Extension, 200 units. 100 of those units were from people who moved here from somewhere else, who have made the decision to move to Greenville. So folks are coming, and we're trying to accommodate them, and we're trying to do it in a responsible way. I want to take part of my three minutes to just compliment the professional staff. That is Woodfield style. We don't really start talking to politicians. We go straight to the professional staff that you've put your trust in, and they can't have a more capable leader than Shannon and the entire team. We had an excess of a dozen meetings with their urban design group to work through this, made several accommodations at their request, including, one of the big ones was preserving the two-story Morgan House and moving across the street, giving us a chance to create a pocket park, which we heard from our very first meetings with the Brandon community that they wanted more open space, no fences around it, and we've done that, and I'll come back to that. But why are we here? It's because of not just Greenville, but what's been going on in the village. It's, and then the city's policy, the fact that this council voted not once but twice to approve the Greenville 2040 comp plan that named these nodes that call for four-to-six stories buildings, greater density. And there are four other plans, as you know, but maybe the audience doesn't, that there's 20 years of history of council plans that call for greater density in the village, going back to 2002 West Greenville Plan. But I've got 46 seconds left. I want to offer three things to address concerns. One, we will work with the neighborhood to make sure this is cool and funky, and DRB has already offered to help us with that. Two, we are willing to take the fifth floor off the building where it meets the edge with the neighborhood, step it down the way we have stepped it down in the front of the commercial district, which was an item the planning commission chair asked us to do. And lastly, just last night, we got a copy of a signed purchase and sale agreement of 10 Seaco Street, which would allow us to triple the size of the pocket park and create a further buffer. We're allowing that family to live there as long as they choose, but when they vacate the house, that house will also be moved like the five other houses, the Mill Village houses that were moving in the village, and that will triple from 3,000 to 9,000 square feet of the pocket park to have more of a buffer and to address the concerns that are understandable from the neighbors. Happy to ask for more questions when y'all get into it. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, everybody, for the great comments, staying in three minutes and keeping it civil and very informative. I think people actually, everybody added something to it. We sit through sometimes, and everybody says exactly the same thing over and over again. And y'all really didn't do that tonight. Some themes were developed, for sure, that we can wrestle with, but thank you for the nuances and the different ways of expressing things about the concerns. So thank you for that. We move on to our agenda. Senegal is up first, right?
Motion approved.
Second. Motion second. Clerk Coleroy.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye.
Regular agenda, 14A.
An ordinance to authorize the use of $774,800, excuse me, $81 in previously appropriated funds for greenways and trails in the Capital Projects Fund for construction of the Cleveland Connector and Traxler Trail, and this is a revised version from the first reading.
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Any further discussion? Clerk Coleroy.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White. 15A, new business. An ordinance to annex approximately 1.387 acres of real property, annex approximately 0.32 acre of adjacent right-of-way, and rezone approximately 1.54 acres located on Pendleton Street, Tractions Street, Seaco Street, and Smith Street, and to provide for the zoning designation of PD.
Motion approved. Okay. Motion second. Ms. Shannon Labren, our planning director and city manager.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I think I definitely got the lucky item on the agenda tonight, so we'll see how this goes, but I'm proud to be here and still believe in the process after 23 years. So it's wonderful to have the opportunity to see the public process at work. So the item presented for your consideration today is an annexation and rezoning request for a project known as the Woven Planned Development. This application consists of two parts, which are considered together. First is the annexation of six parcels and portions of rights-of-way into the city limits. The second is the rezoning to a planned development for the six annexed parcels and six existing parcels that are already in the city limits. All 12 parcels would be included in the woven project, and the total property, project property is 2.91 acres. Next slide, please. The property is located along Pendleton Street, just beyond the commercial core of the village of West Greenville. The properties currently in the city are zoned R, D, V, redevelopment district, and C1, neighborhood commercial district. The properties are located within the West Greenville Special Emphasis Neighborhood. The six new parcels are proposed to be added to the neighborhood as part of the annexation if that were to be approved. Next slide, please. This map shows the property proposed for annexation as part of this project. The total annexation area is 1.366 acres, so a little less than half of the total project area is proposed as part of the annexation. Next slide, please. Here's some specific stats related to the property. This slide shows a summary of the zoning, the future land use, and current services. The county parcels are currently served by Parker Fire and Sewer District. Next slide, please. This is the site plan for the proposed project. I have a colored one on the next slide, a colored image, but I wanted to start with this. This is the civil site plan for the woven project that provides specific details, and this was the site plan that was presented to the planning commission for their review and approval. May we go to the next slide, please? Thank you. So here is the colored image of the site plan as it exists today. The proposed woven project consists of two five-story buildings situated on two blocks next to the village of West Greenville. These buildings contain up to 254 multifamily units and 30,000 square feet of commercial space. The building seen on the left wraps a 415-space parking garage, which could be accessed from Smith Street and Seaco. Approximately 36 of the garage parking spaces would be available for public use. Public open space includes a new outdoor plaza located on Pendleton Street and new community park south of the project site. The new park and relocated Morgan House serve as a buffer from the existing one-story mill homes. Next slide, please. As mentioned, the buildings would be five stories with a maximum building height of 75 feet. Along Pendleton Street, the buildings are stepped down to two stories to better integrate into the existing development patterns of the village. These storefronts provide space for commercial and artistic uses and serve as an extension of the village business district. And that is the area that, that the staff really focused on at the beginning of the project, was trying to work on, bringing that height down at Pendleton Street to keep the, preserve the existing character of Pendleton Street and the village and to keep them at the same height at street level. I think that we've learned a lot over the years about the importance of that, and I think we've heard Rob Robinson and some other architects that we respect that do work for the city talk about the importance of having that at a pedestrian level at the streetscape, and it's really important to the urbanization of the street to have it at a level that works for pedestrians. I think that that is an area that does work for the village if you look at just that specific section, the two-story, because we did work on bringing that section down. Streetscape improvements are also included as part of the project, and that is included in part of the designs that you do see. 10% of the residential units have been offered as affordable housing or workforce attainable housing at 80% AMI as offered by the developer. The developer indicated a desire to partner with the city and county to increase the number of affordable units to 20%. However, I want to make sure that it's important to note that's not currently part of this project. That would require county approval. In addition, the woven PD includes below-market-rate commercial space with five retail and commercial incubator spaces, approximately 2,900 square feet along Tractions Street. At the planning commission public hearing, the applicant indicated that leasing rates of these spaces could be as low as 50% of market rate. Staff would encourage the developer to work with the city's economic development department to identify potential tenants for these spaces if this were to come to fruition. Next slide, please. The project is consistent with the height recommendations of Greenville 2040, which identifies the village as a mixed-use urban node with building heights of four to six stories. However, the project does exceed the density recommendations for an urban node under Greenville 2040, which calls for 30 units per acre. The woven PD proposes 254 multifamily units on 2.91 acres, clocking in at just under 90 units an acre. The Village of West Greenville Micro Area Plan, which was recommended by the planning commission earlier this year, proposes mixed-use development up to six stories and 90 units per acre when 10% affordable housing is considered. That plan asserts that the current RDB zoning district is incompatible with the village character due to lack of appropriate design guidelines and development regulations. It also states that the 20-unit-per-acre density limit in RDB presents challenges to developing new housing that is necessary to support village businesses. Next slide, please. At the request of the city's planning commission, the developer prepared sample renderings showing the mass, height, and scale of the project within the community. This view is looking north at the project from Smith Street. Next slide, please. The view from the intersection on Lois Avenue across from the project site. For reference, the entrance to Village Wrench would be to, on your left in this image. Next slide, please. This image is one you would see driving along Pendleton Street through the village heading away from downtown. Next slide. And here's the image from the traffic light in the village looking west along Pendleton Next slide. Another perspective, looking down from Pendleton, down Tractions Street, the one-story building with Bar Margaret is visible on the left. And finally, the rear of the project with some of the existing one-story mill homes shown for reference. Next slide, please. Staff recommended approval for this project. Multiple departments, including planning, community development, engineering, and fire reviewed this project, as with every rezoning application. Each department provided comments or conditions in the staff report, which were included in the agenda packet and incorporated within the ordinance document. At the public hearing, planning commission conducted two votes on this application. The first recommendation for approval failed by a vote of one to five. In order to provide a clear recommendation to city council, the commission took a second vote to recommend denial, which passed five to one. Among the stated reasons for recommending denial were the mass, scale, setbacks, and density of the proposed planned development. No concerns were expressed regarding the annexation portion of the application, and I did not hear any of that expressed tonight either through the public comment. If council were to vote to approve this project, the ordinance as written includes the comments and conditions from the staff report. This includes requiring final development plan approval by the planning commission. That is not normally a consideration, but it would be necessary in this case.
So it goes back to the planning commission?
It would go back to the planning commission. Assurances regarding the retail incubator component. We want that deed restricted, and we would want it to be monitored through our community development department.
I'm sorry, say that last part again.
Assurances regarding the retail incubator component. Architectural refinements. Staff would like to see additional changes to the architecture of the building.
Such as?
We would like to work with the developer to address some of the mass and height and scale of the building, including that fifth floor that causes a lot of issues. We had asked that to be stepped back previously, and that was not done prior to going to planning commission. That is something we would want to work with them on. Work with staff to help integrate the streetscape, public plaza, new public park, and project components in with the community and existing village. and project components in with the community and existing village. We feel that there is additional work that could be done there to make it work better with the existing village. A condition that was also included in the staff report, so that if no progress is made within three years, the city will initiate a rezoning amendment to an appropriate zoning district under the new development code. And this is under the planned developments. We had reviewed this previously with our previous city attorney, Mike Pitts, who said that council, at your discretion, has the ability to enter into what is known as a clawback provision related to planned developments. At this time, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Shannon, we'll have other chances to discuss.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
So a couple of questions for the benefit of council, and maybe those in the public, and certainly for my own. But with what you just said about the staff conditions, to be clear, you're stating that passage of the ordinance before council would, in effect, enact each of those staff conditions?
We would ask that you would make sure that those are included if you were to, if you were to move forward.
And when you mentioned what you said about the staff's desire to work with some of the architectural detail?
Yes.
Would that include, per the staff comments in the report, anything recommended by the DRB?
Yes, we would want to have two members of our Design Review Board work with us on how, on the colors, redoing some of the architecture to bring in a more unique component to really fit within the village, as well as with the mass, height, and scale of the building.
I said two questions, maybe I meant three or four. I don't know, can I just exhaust all my questions, Captain? Thank you. So the developer said something that was of interest to me that I, that I remember this evening, I had previously heard in recent weeks, and that is that there have been, in 20 years, a number of plans focused on West Greenville. Of course, the most recent, significant being GBL 2040. I'm sorry, Madam City Clerk, I need to talk into Mike, perhaps. Is there, is there any substantial element of what's before council today that runs blatantly or clearly in conflict with any of these plans from the past two decades?
The density. The density is.
Just referenced?
Yes, sir.
From, from the GBL 40, but it sounded like it more aligns with that reference in the recent Small Area Plan?
That's correct, but the Greenville 2040 plan that identified it as a node, the density is above what that, of the existing node.
Thank you. My final question is, even though it's a work in progress, I recognize, but it's a fluid conversation, and we know how important the work being done in the Greenville Development Code is for ultimately that which will underpin the comp plan. Has there been even, even if it's non-binding, but rather intentional anecdotal feedback given by the gentleman, the team, ladies and gentlemen at CZB, about whether or not, based on their work that's underway, this might fit nicely with the vision of West Greenville from a code standpoint?
Yes, they, they did think that the, the fifth story needs to come down, and that that needs to be rescaled. That's not, but then they came back and said it's really too early to tell. But that was their initial feedback to me, was the reduction of the fifth story.
And I understand it's somewhat premature because it has not reached.
That's right.
Final draft, but thanks for just a sense of that. Okay, thank you.
Further questions from, to Shannon? Anybody else specific to Shannon?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, so on the, on this affordable housing aspect of this, the only thing that's in there now is 10% at 80% AMI. And for there to be more, that would have to be agreed upon at a later date, is what you're saying?
Yes, unless the developer can make the pro forma work with his current financing, it would require the approval of a multi-county industrial park through the city council and county council.
So there's no, there's no actual requirement that we're going to be looking at 10% 60, 10% at 60% AMI?
Not, not, not as it is presented this evening, no, sir.
All right, so.
Speak into your microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me, Camilla? All right. What should the density be on this project pursuant to the 2040 plan?
The pursuit, the 2040 plan calls for, called for 30 units an acre. However, we also have to look at what can we be supported? And I just don't know that number yet without really sitting down and studying it. We just responded to the plan that was put in front of us. I do think that there is, there, we need to look at the height and the scale and the mass. I don't get too caught up on density. I think I've talked to y'all about that before. Because to me, the density, you can look at a building, and it doesn't matter to me and to most professional planners if there's one unit in there or six units in there. What, what truly matters, I believe, and I think what most people respond to, and I don't want to speak for everyone, but I think what you kind of respond to when you look at an area is how does the building fit into the context of the built environment? Does it fit within the character of the existing built environment? And that is what I think we have, that we tend to look at more, and is something that we're really focusing on with the new development code, while we're looking at more of a form-based code and less about a Euclidean code that is more dependent on use, density, setbacks, et cetera, and we're actually looking at the form. How does the form of that building fit within the built environment?
Okay, and I want to get to that, too, but, but, so based on 2040 plan, what I'm hearing is that we should be looking at.
This is over, this density is over what was recommended in the 2040 plan.
We should be looking at about 90 units. Is that right?
Less than 90 units.
Less than 90. Now, you talked about the form. And can you go to your, the screen where you showed the layout of the development?
This one?
Yeah. My, my, my understanding in this community is that, and you can't really see where I'm pointing, but, but at the top of the screen, that's on Pendleton, correct?
Yes, sir.
And in the back of it, that backs up to the neighborhood and the houses and the, the single units that, that, that are in that area?
Correct.
What's that boundary? I mean, what's that, that barrier, that green thing? What is that?
That is the buffer, and it varies in differing sizes based on the area and the width. So if you'll notice right there where the relocation of the Morgan House is, they've added a pocket park, so there's much more of a barrier there between the development and the existing single-family houses. Now, it's a lot, it's a lot less. It's more like 10 to 15 feet on the other sides. However, I understood the developer to say tonight that I believe that he's put one of those under contract to make that pocket park larger, which would then come down and bring, have additional buffer space. One of the things that we've been talking a lot about a lot in Greenville 2040 as we work on the development code is transition. And really, the best buffer that you can have in a transition between uses is space. And so I, I understood him to say that there would be additional space based on that tonight, but that's, that's, this plan only shows about 15 feet.
Okay, and just to compare this to another project that we looked at, the Alliance. Do you recall what the setbacks on that are?
Um, I do not, but I can get that for you pretty quick. I do know it was 116 units, four stories at the corner of Lawrence and Ackley. Um, I believe the buffer was about 15 feet, but I would, I would have to verify that. But I can find that out pretty quick.
Because my recollection of it, from the house that was on, that is on Ackley, there's a, there's the parking lot, and then on the other side of the parking lot, there's like a green space, including like a, I don't think it's a water retention, but, but.
Stormwater area?
Stormwater area.
I do know that that project is built right up to the street on both Lawrence and Ackley. And that's something that we encourage, is to build it up against the street. So there's going to be separation, although it's in the form of a parking lot, there is separation between the buil, between that building and the adjacent building. I just don't know this, I just don't know the distance.
Is there any reason why this project can't be reconfigured to provide more of a setback like that?
I believe that you would be looking at both a setback and a step back.
Okay, explain the difference, Sweeney, too.
So a setback is where the actual front face of the building would be in accordance to the property line. Um, and then a step back is what I'm showing, what we're showing right here, right where, that you see that you have the first two stories, and then the building actually steps back so that the height is not as overwhelming.
Threatful.
As drastic. That's right. And so the step backs can help reduce that height and just the feeling of the mass of that building.
Okay, now, you guys have recommended some changes to this, or some provisions. When you say it would go back to the Planning Commission, what's it going back to the Planning Commission for?
If you were to approve the planned development this evening, it would have to come back to you for a second reading, and then you would approve an ordinance. Before they could go to permit, they would have to come and to bring a final development plan that would go to the Planning Commission for review and approval, similar to how we would look at a multifamily project prior to permitting.
Okay, but it would not come back to us?
No, the final development plan does not go back to city council. Once you make a decision on this zoning change, one way or the other, it is then in the hands of the Planning Commission.
Okay, and, and if the Planning Commission did not agree with the amended plan, what happens then? Would they just deny it?
Well, once it's set by ordinance, they would have to work within the confines of the ordinance as council so desired, because the zoning is ultimately a council decision.
Okay, what I'm saying is, I mean, if we rezone it, it goes back to the Planning Commission for a review of the development plan. If Planning Commission did not agree with the development plan, what happens to the project?
Well, the final development plan is expected to be in accordance with the approved planned development. So you would want to have a good idea of exactly what you're approving by the planned development before sending it back to Planning Commission in that scenario, because the Planning Commission is going to be, is going to have to operate within the confines of the ordinance, because it sets its own ordinance. Planned development is its own set of rules and regulations, similar to what I look at every day in this book. And they can't, if, if it's, if it's very much in keeping with what you all approved, it would be hard for them to deny it and for us to defend that.
So, so prior to going back to Planning Commission for this review, we kind of need to know what we would want in this project beforehand, correct?
Yes, because you are setting the ordinance, and the ordinance is the law. That's correct.
And if we don't know what we want, then we're basically just sending it back for a rubber stamp by Planning Commission?
Correct, unless you decide what you do want.
Okay.
They still have a good bit of, you know, a lot of the things you talked about in the DRB and all, that's a lot of design issues that fall back on the Planning Commission.
They do, but this, this is the law.
We're not being specific about those things, but we're telling them to look at these.
That's right. Unless you give them specific guidance and you incorporate it into the planned development, though it's specific to what you approve, and while they have some leeway, it's expected to be in substantial compliance, because otherwise it's considered a major modification. A major modification then requires city council approval. Minor modifications can be reviewed and approved by staff.
You, you talked a lot about setbacks and step backs, and you talked a lot about them looking at four floors instead of five and how that would work. Is that for the Planning Commission to, to, to flesh out, if you will?
You, you can do that. So under the, I hope it's okay to say, but under the code, you have multiple options of how to address this. A, you can approve this as submitted. B, you can approve this with modifications, but those modifications need to be specific to be included within the ordinance, so that the ordinance that comes back to you for second reading would be clear with your intent. Third, you can deny this application, and that would be the end of it. Or fourth, you can remand it back to Planning Commission for further review, and it has to return to you within 65 days. And that's under the set procedures within the zoning code.
Now, now, if we remand it back to Planning Commission, basically Planning Commission gets to consider all of these new changes that they're talking about doing right now, correct?
Correct. It would have to go back through the Planning Commission process. So there would be another, they would, you would remand it back to Planning Commission for further study, and there would be another public hearing, and, and we would have to public notice any changes to the design that were submitted to the city.
So Planning Commission could look at whether or not there was a, whether the effect of losing a story off the building made the bill, made the project more amenable?
They could, and I would suggest that if you do remand it back to Planning Commission, that you, um, give specific guidance as to, to both the Planning Commission and the staff as to what you would like studied. So if I could, just so I can state this, make sure I'm being very accurate on this with y'all, review and action by city council. After receipt of the report from the Planning Commission, the city council may receive public comments in addition to those provided at the public hearing. At the public meeting, the city council shall consider the application, the relevant support materials, the staff report, the report of the Planning Commission, and any testimony or other evidence submitted to the Planning Commission or to the city council. In its discretion, the city council may refer the matter to the Planning Commission for further study and recommendation on specific issues for supplemental report to be submitted to the city council within 65 days. If the referral requires additional public notification, it shall be given in accordance with subsection 19-2.2.9. The city council shall either adopt an ordinance amending the text of this chapter or the zoning district map, whichever is appropriate, or disapprove the application based on the standards of subsection 19-2.3.
I'm not hearing you say, though, that this council has to get into, uh, with great specificity what we mean by.
No, you can remand it back and just kind of tell us what you've said.
We're talking about a furry man, though.
Yeah.
We're talking about a furry man. Now, now, with that said, if, if the developer wanted to do 10% affordable housing at 60%, if we remanded back to the Planning Commission, the developer could add that as part of the project, could they not?
Yes, because it's the planned development, and you can basically add any standards that someone chooses to do through a planned development, and it's enforceable as part of the ordinance that's adopted. I would also add that we would add that it be deed restricted to reflect such, and that that be monitored through our Community Development Department.
So the only way that we can actually make sure that there's 10% 60, 10% affordable housing at 60% in this project is basically to do a remand back to the Planning Commission?
Not necessarily. You can either remand it back to Planning Commission, or you can add it to a condition of approval if you so choose to adopt the ordinance, either way. But that is the only way, is if it's somehow or another included within the ordinance, because as we don't have an inclusionary zoning in the state of South Carolina, we cannot require it. However, if he's offered it as part of the planned development, then we can incorporate that as part of the conditions of the planned development.
But because he has not offered it as plan, part of the planned development, that's not really something that we can mandate at this juncture, is it?
You can ask him. You cannot mandate. At this point, it's not in the ordinance that's presented before you this evening, because it was not included in the.
So we can't mandate it anyway. We could just say, hey, we'd really like it if you did this.
Correct.
But there'd be no, there'd be no enforceable mechanism to make sure that that happened, correct?
If he agreed, and you added it to the ordinance and it was voted on, then yes, it is enforceable.
Okay.
But if I may, didn't you say earlier that that has to do with action by county council as well?
Well, that, that's the, that's the 10%, if he's wanting, if he wants to do 20%. My understanding is that the developer would need the multi-county industrial park in order to make the pro forma work, and that requires city, county council action.
Mr. Mayor, I recognize we're in a period of Q and A and discussion, which we need to fulfill and exhaust, but I just want to share with colleagues on council, when the time is right, I've already got, having seconded the motion before council, I've already got a series of proposed amendments. So let me just say that when that time comes, there's things based on this conversation already thinking about.
Okay.
I've got some questions.
Okay, well, I've, I've still got a few more. Now, did we do a traffic mitigation study as part of this?
I do believe so, and it would be required at the final development plan. That is not part of the purview of Planning Commission necessarily. That is the purview of staff to review and approve as part of the permitting process.
Because I'm kind of familiar with that intersection, the one at Traktion and Pendleton, and there's a good bit of backup there at certain times of the day, even without this. So have we looked at that, Clint? Have we looked at that to determine whether or not that's going to be an additional problem, when we're talking about these extra units?
A traffic study was submitted and was reviewed. All the, the operations were determined to perform except.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Acceptable levels of service.
Okay, and you're comfortable with that?
Yes, the staff has reviewed that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, other questions?
Shannon?
Yes.
What does monolithic mean?
Monolithic, um, just very big and bland.
Big bland, does it, um, it used to be a term that Jay Graham used to use, and he was passionate about having airspace moving between buildings and not having monolithic. And this is two buildings.
Correct.
Are these monolithic?
Well, I do think that it is.
Do they have passageway in between them?
Yes, they have a passageway in between.
I mean, yeah, well, they've got a road, but I mean, are they broken up into?
Staff would think that it needs some additional setbacks, as previously stated.
Okay. It, it is beyond the density of what 2040 recommends.
Yes.
Several weeks ago, you gave a presentation on the development code. It was kind of a sneak peek, a little teaser, um, which we all were very much enjoyed. And I remember, I took, I went back and looked at that presentation and saw the, the focus on transitions, particularly when commercial or new development is abutting residential, and we. And we spent months last year doing text amendments to protect residents when commercial abuts it, and this is commercial abutting residential. In the diagram that you shared during that presentation several weeks ago, those different transitions, I don't see that in this. I do see it fronting Pendleton, but I don't see it in any other of the three sides. And you're saying, is that true?
No, I would, I would argue that the, the Pocket Park is a transition and it serves as a transition.
Okay, but it's not the entire line. And that, but that's on one building, but not the other?
Correct.
Okay, so the other one doesn't have it. The thing that, that, that is hard to get from these drawings to me is, that's a great picture, but if I was standing down to where Mr. Pace's Jewelers was, it would look significantly different. And the reason is because of the rise. So that elevation on that property is about 20, 30 feet higher, maybe? It's, it's on a hill. This is a high point of that area.
That's right, this is the high point of the area.
So the perspective, when you're at downhill, is going to be significantly different. Pendleton is a two-lane road. This is 250, how many units is this?
254 approximately.
So, you know, I have a hard time visualizing, again, I'm always trying to get 3D models, but I can't seem to make it happen, but I hear 250 units and I think of McLaren. 250, give or take?
262, something like that.
I think of 408 Jackson.
227.
227, so slightly smaller than this. The green.
270, 270.
The green's bigger.
270.
And so McLaren and 408 are pretty comparable in terms of the number of units, and they, they are taking upwards of three, four years to build, particularly 408 has been a long time. I think 408, the demo began in 2018, and is just now opening, it's lovely, but we're four years hence, and that's partly COVID. Has staff had any conversations with the developer on how you develop a property of this size on a two-lane road, and the constructability of that and the impact? Because my concern is, you know, hearing from these businesses, you know, my whole heart goes to them. By the way, Unlocked Roasters, The Bries, Coastal Crust, Revival, he's not here, all of you. Bauer House, very grateful for your investment, I've enjoyed all of your products. My concern is, is what construction is going to do to a two-lane road over a three, four year period to those businesses?
They will have to submit a construction plan that will be approved by our city engineer prior to construction beginning. We're not at that point yet.
If, if it was fewer buildings, if it was, you know, broken up into different buildings, it could be phased, could it not?
It could be phased, correct. It could still be phased with the two buildings, but it could be phased even more with more buildings, correct?
All right, thank you.
And where will the construction, because I'm saying I drive to there every weekend. So I read, the streets are small, on Pendleton Street, that's going to be a problem. But, but my other concern is the future of West Greenville and the, and the history of the historical, of all of, of the mills in the area, and, and what West Greenville and the village has been known as. You know, this, this sounds good, but as, as it's been stated, and even Mrs. Norris says it best, the future. What will it look like? What will be his history from the past? Will any of the past come with it? Because this doesn't even have any relationship to the past in terms of that particular area. And all I'm saying is that it's a small street, it's going to be very difficult in terms of construction. So I'm thinking whenever, whatever we look at, we've got to make sure that we protect the people who travel through there, because a lot of people come through there to, to use the business. They won't be able to use the business. I know, because most of the streets in the neighborhood where I live and everybody else, they're fixing them, the roads and just detour, detour, detour. So I'm saying, we have some point, we've got to stop straining the residents who live in the neighborhood. I'm talking about the folk who go to sleep there and wake up in the morning. We've got to stop putting it such that they have to bear the brunt of all of the construction. Now, now there's, you know, you want things to be done, but I'm just saying, we've got to figure out a better way.
Mr. Mayor, would it be appropriate for Will to introduce his amendments?
I guess when somebody else finished saying what they got to say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just going down the line here.
Yeah, that's right.
Lilian is finished, but.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm finished, oh, yeah.
When you're finished, I'll.
Go ahead, I, I'm just concerned about a lot of different things, but I'm saying, yes, you can go ahead and do yours, but it's the history. No matter what we decide tonight, if we put this particular project there, unless it's going to integrate somewhere with all of the mills in the particular community and have some historical data for mills, this is going to just wipe out what we know, what I grew up as, this particular area.
And just so we clear, before we get to Will's amendments, I'd like, I would like to make a motion for a full remand back to the Planning Commission to totally review the project and work with the neighborhood and work on these issues of mass and scale and all the things, all the reasons why.
He's already got the motion in, in a second.
Okay.
Let me, if you don't mind, let me, let, let me just carry it through here, because these folks had their hands raised, and I wanted to let them say something. We got his motion, maybe we can actually make a few more comments and vote on something. Okay, Russell?
I have, my comments are very short. A student of planning and a believer that planning is fun, Shannon.
It still is, 23 years later, I still say it.
We spent a lot of time developing GBL 2040 and relied on a committee of 42 people to help us come up with that plan. And the plan of nodes and corridors, which calls for six to seven-story buildings in our, in our nodes, I think is an important idea for us to embrace. And at the same time, this is the first litmus test we have of whether or not this council believes in GBL 2040. And I would be, well, I would be remiss if, I would be disappointed if the very first one out of the chute, we did not embrace and, and support.
I would like to respond to that. This does not confer to GBL 2040.
I'd like to respond to that. This is not the first time that we've dealt with something on a node or corridor with the 2040 plan. The first thing we did, the first plan that I remember was the Alliance. It is a, as Shannon said, it is a four-story building, it is on a corridor. It has 100%, 60% AMI. Now, the difference between that plan and this plan, all due respect, and I know a lot of things that I like about, about your plan, the difference between the way that plan went down and this plan is going down, is that the developers, very, very early on, talked to the neighborhoods, talked to the residents, and made substantial changes to the plan in order to accommodate. The plan that we started off with, the Alliance, and I know this because Alliance is right by my neighborhood in Nickle Town, the plan that we started off with Alliance was markedly different than what they started off with. And through those changes, it became a plan that the entire community, the entire neighborhood could embrace and support. I believe that that is something that can happen here, but I don't think that your plan as it is right now is that plan. Now, I, I'm looking at this, and I'm looking at this, you know, the map that I'm, the diagram that I'm looking at, and I'm seeing all kind of ways where, where it can be reconfigured so that some of these boundaries are taken away, they create more setbacks, more step backs, as Shannon said, all kind of things that transition and make this thing more amenable to, to the, the neighborhood and the neighbors. If you want to put in 10%, 6% affordable housing, which I strongly, strongly, strongly support, let's go back to the Planning Commission, put it in and get it in there right away so that it's enforceable.
Below 60%. Can't, 80% is.
Yeah, 80, I'm telling you, 80. 80% affordable housing does absolutely nothing for the people who live in that community and are being forced out, because they, our AMI right now for a single person is roughly $59,000. The median income for a black person is $17,000. So when you start talking about 80% AMI, the black people living in that neighborhood, they're not, they're, they're going to be forced out. I mean, that's just the absolute, I'm back up, they're not going to be living at the woolen. Okay, so, so, you know, that number of affordable housing does absolutely nothing for the people who, who are, who are going to be most affected by this project, or who we hope as council, I believe, to, to, to mostly support through our affordable housing initiatives. Like I said, though, there is a way for this project to be done where it, where it works for the neighborhoods and where it works for the neighbors, works for, for West Greenville, whatever we're calling it now, in a way that makes everybody happy, but right now, this, this project is not at that point. And again, though, we talk about these nodes and corridors. The reason why the 2040 plan says that we put density on corridors and nodes is to protect the neighborhoods.
That's right.
I mean, that's the whole purpose of it. It's not just so we can say, okay, we're going to designate these areas, and then whatever, whatever goes there, goes there. We, we put them on there in a way that they protect the neighbors. And as we're doing this LMO, we're not having a one neighborhood fit all, all code. We are having, we, they are developing a, a code that is unique for each neighborhood, each node, each area, that takes into effect the characteristics of that neighborhood and tries to protect it as much as possible. So the idea that because this is a, a, a project that has density, and we've said in the 2040 plan, we support density on nodes and corridors, that does in no way whatsoever mean that we are somehow required or obligated to support this plan.
Well, Pendleton Street is not really a major corridor. I mean, have you been there?
Yes, that's the other street.
So can I make a comment to that effect? Because Greenville 24, I take great exception to my fellow council member's statement, because as you know, and as Shannon said, Greenville 2040 calls for 30 units per acre. This is triple that. Greenville 2040 calls for nodes to organically develop because they are supported by the corridors between them. The village is not McAllister Square, it is not Haywood Mall, it is not CUICAR, it has a two-lane corridor in it. So if it could even support 30 units per acre, that would be a stretch. So to say that we don't support Greenville 2040 with a no vote on this, I take great exception to. Now, moving forward, I was at the Planning Commission meeting for this. There was a lot of, of public comment. The developer was given the option to pull his project before a vote. They declined that option. They were given all indications it was not going to pass, and they decided to push it on through. You mentioned that staff worked with the developer and asked them to reduce by a story, and they would not.
That's, actually, no, I said I wanted them to step back that top story when I asked them to step it back.
Okay, and they would not, and they would not. So there have been multiple opportunities to do the things, you know, that, that, that we're saying would make it better that have been declined. Now, here we are, the Planning Commission denied it, and we're fast-tracking it to, to City Council to see if we can get it through. Someone said, I think it was my colleague, Councilmember Gibson, said, you know, we need to know what we want, we're not sure what we want, it needs to have teeth, and I'm ad-libbing a little bit. What we want is the Greenville Development Code. We have invested two years and over a million dollars to get a new development code. We are, I'm guessing, two months out from seeing a draft to pass this, knowing I don't think it matches the development code, because it doesn't match any of those slides. I can't even imagine doing that at this point. Now, we can remand it back to the Planning Commission, but my first thing would be to say, Planning Commission, work with the developer, and I hope they would, to make sure it matches the Greenville Development Code that we know we're going to have in hand by then. But the problem with that is that they get to come back within 60 days, and they won't have the draft of the code. So we're kind of going in circles here.
You could probably still, okay, council embracing it? You got your.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm in no rush. I want my council colleagues to know that. Really, the reason I was raising it is because I was chewing them in my mind, I was afraid I would forget some detail to the amendments, but. So naturally, the amendments I would offer are only intended to make, in my view, the motion before council now stronger and better, triggered by Shannon saying that a PD is in effect the law, right, the order.
It is the ordinance for that property, it is the zoning for that property.
So what I will propose doing, Mr. Mayor, is rattle off the ones I'm thinking of, but I recognize that presumably each would require an up or down vote, as if they were going to be amendment unless it's a bundle. Okay? But may I rattle them off?
You go ahead and rattle.
I still, I know it's great, but I still believe that the, that the more efficient course of action would be to vote on a full remand first, before looking at amendments, but do it how you want to do it.
Well, I think, I would, I think.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, so we've got to settle the question that's been moved in second. And this is my way of saying, in my view, that motion would get stronger, in my belief, by what I'm proposing.
But I think you can, we can buy, we'll have to hear what you have to say, but we can bundle it together by.
The first thing I would say definitively, in my view, is that the staff conditions, as Shannon mentioned, would be applicable should the, should the ordinance pass. And so, just for clarity's sake, everything that the staff and the staff's report recommends, I would add as an amendment to the ordinance that's before us, that's number one.
Okay.
The second, as a very specific requirement, if I, if I'm following correctly everything I've heard since we've begun this discussion, I would, I would propose via amendment that we direct the developer to eliminate the top floor, reducing density, achieving a setback, and in the process, creating a little bit further buffer for the benefit of the neighbor. That's a second amendment. I think I heard the developer say, the house that you acquired would give you the capability of tripling, did you say triple, the Pocket Park? If it's appropriate answer, you may.
Yes, Councilman. So currently, this Pocket Park, as you see on the screen, is 3,000 feet. We have everything to the left in gray, if you just squared it off, it's another 6,000 feet, so it would, it would triple the size of that park. That's, that's the Logan family property. And just one clarification, what I've, what I've offered since the site plan is on here, is removing the top floor on the back of the building, on the edge where it meets, for further step back, in addition to further buffering or further.
So staff conditions, removal, as was just described of that top floor in the back, I'll say very specifically, the requirement to, to triple the size of the Pocket Park. Shannon mentioned architectural detail that the staff request. I would add a fourth element to the amendment, which is to incorporate the recommendations of the DRB. I think the developer said he promised the community that it would be funky and cool. I think the incorporation of some of these requirements would go towards that. And then the final thing, without getting long-winded, that I'm tremendously interested in, although I don't know exactly, I'll say the final thing, two other things, and I would ask for guidance from a legal standpoint, if this fits in a PD. Anything that can be mandated relative to traffic mitigation, I know is of great interest to all of council, it sure is to me, and now would be the time in the form of a PD, it occurs to me, to bake that in. And then Shannon, you mentioned it's probably contained in the staff recommendations. Let me confirm, if there's a requirement that we could place upon the developer to work with and through the city's economic development staff in terms of those, the tenant space, is that already contained in the conditions?
Yes, but I would ask that you to add that, just to ensure that it is included within the ordinance, and it be at 50% below market rate, as he's previously stated to the Planning Commission, and that that be monitored through our Community Development Department, and that they, he work with our Economic Development Department to identify tenants for that use.
So that's a lot, that's a mouthful, it probably needs fine tuning for consideration, but I would simply say, we could certainly add more, but I would love to see each of those amendments added to strengthen the motion before.
I would take that as a bundle of amendments, if there's no acclamation, if it's okay. I don't mean to vote on it still, but if we do that.
This question, I want to clarify one. The first one is the staff conditions. What do they, what are the staff conditions? I've heard some of them, but there's a whole list of staff conditions, I think, that was written somewhere, that we were given, am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. The staff, because it was a list of things.
Whatever the major ones with you, but I will read all of them. I mean, I can read every, all of them if you would like me to, Councilmember Fleming.
No, not all of, I'm, I'm saying, is, well.
The major ones were requiring the final development plan to be approved by Planning Commission.
Okay, going on.
Assurances regarding the retail incubator component.
Okay, number two.
Our architectural refinements that we've discussed at length.
Well, wait a minute, before you jump ahead, architectural refinements, you discussed it late, but, so spell those out a little bit more.
So we want to see the step back on the fifth floor and the reduction of the mass scale and height. We also want to see them work with us on materials and colors that are more indicative of the village architecture. Working with staff to help integrate the streetscape, public plaza, and new Pocket Park and project components in with the community and existing village. We believe that all of the public space areas need additional work and refinement. And then about the clawback provision, that if it's, if it sits for three years and no progress is made, that it would come back to before you. is made, that it would come back to before you to revert back to the original zoning classification.
Now, just to clarify, hasn't that already been established as a...
It's got to be put into the...
It needs to be put into the ordinance in order for us to make sure that we are protected in the future.
Okay.
You know, I think back to when we had Mosaic in front of us a year ago, and there was far less discussion on that, but a huge community turnout. And, you know, I remember, I think Councilwoman Brazington put it best during that one, said, with all that, with all that, I don't think we're in a position to vote on it. I very much feel the same way on this. I'm a little bit lost in what kind of teeth we really would have after this. I'd be more inclined to postpone and let, you know, let them continue to work on it. I just don't see it as ready.
Well, just for efficiency purposes, Mr. Gibson said so well, if we could move to voting on his amendment, then once that's done, matter's back to us again as amended, and then we can vote up or down. You had the motion on the amendments, or second, his motions?
I second.
Second, okay.
We're just holding on the amendment, right?
On his amendments. Okay, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
I have a motion.
So we have it as amended. Do you have a motion?
I move that the matter be remanded back to planning commission on a full remand and with instructions for planning commission to consider, with instructions for the developer to work with the neighborhood and planning commission on minimizing the impact of the various reasons that planning commission denied this project to begin with in a five-to-one vote, including mass scale setbacks, all of that.
I don't think that's what we have. Ms. Palladi, I don't, what do you think? Think we have the motion?
There was this, I understand the main motion was to approve.
It before us.
The secondary motion was for the amendments which passed, so we're back to the main motion originally made.
Okay.
Listen next to the table, is that what he's doing?
We got to vote on it as amended.
We got to vote on the main motion.
So let me get this straight.
I think I know what you're...
Yeah, so let me get this straight. So we have a motion that, we have a matter that comes up before council. Then we have to move to approve it before we can consider a motion to remand or table it?
I think you could make a motion to table it, right?
Then I move to table it.
I think that's your more appropriate thing.
It's to table the original motion to approve.
Motion in second on that.
Second.
Second, okay. Okay, clerk, call the roll on tabling.
This is a clarification.
This is tabling, which would... Tabling what? His motion, his motion as amended.
Oh, we haven't voted, I'm sorry, no, 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 let's vote on, we already voted on his motion.
Right.
There was a second.
You want to go ahead and vote on that?
Yeah, so we voted on his motion.
Okay, I'd be glad to do that.
No, no, we voted on his amendment. We already voted on his amendment. We're back to the original motion. I'm moving to table the original motion.
As amended, yeah.
As amended.
As amended, that's what I thought.
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, call the roll on tabling.
Mr. Mayor, I think we have discussion in order, do we not?
Not for tabling.
No, not...
Is there a discussion for tabling?
It's kind of a...
Up or down on table, on the motion table? Up or down, no discussion.
Okay. Clerk, call the roll on table. So you're tabling, yeah.
I'm tabling the motion, yeah, the motion as amended, the whole thing. I'm seeking to table the entire thing.
Right, right.
And if you are tabling it...
Clerk, call the roll on tabling.
You're tabling it, you're taking it off the table and bringing it...
Yeah, I think that there's to be a motion to table it to a date certain, to next meeting, or it could be postponed, right?
Or we don't have to postpone.
We usually do the tabling. Tabling means, tabling is your way of putting it aside, then you can do something else later if you want to, but that, but otherwise, tabling would mean we would not get back to the motion and the...
Can I table it with a condition? Can I move the table with a condition?
No, no, you can't do that. It's kind of unfair, but you can do that.
All right.
Y'all need to read the Roberts rules.
That, so...
You can do that.
So clerk is calling the roll on tabling. Motion to table.
Councilmember DeWorke.
No.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Brazington.
No.
Councilmember Stoll.
No.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
No, no. We're back, we can't, table it, we're back to the motion.
Back to the original motion.
It would still sends it back to the planning commission for...
And just to be clear, if we, to vote on a motion to remand, we would first have to deny it? No, back up, hold on.
The original motion that was made when the item was called by Councilmember Brazington was to approve, and there's a second, so there has to be a vote on that motion first.
Okay, so let me be clear, though, because when Shannon stood up, she said we had a number of options. One of those options was to remand back to planning commission. So how do we get procedurally to a point where we can vote on a motion to remand it back to planning commission?
I think that would have had to be the original motion made on the item.
I think the tabling, I think the tabling, I think the tabling would be how we would do it.
So let me get this straight, so we're back to my first question. It has normally been, it has always been the procedure that we vote to, we vote to approve so that we can start discussion. So now you guys are telling me that we can't, that we can't, that first I have to make a motion to remand to keep that option open? Because I will start making a motion to remand everything that comes up, and then we can have our discussion, and then we can see about it.
I think your motion to table was the proper way.
No, but that's not really what I want to do. What I want is, I want this thing to go back to planning commission. I want planning commission to look at it. Let me finish, Mr. Mayor. I want planning commission to look at it. I want all the things that he refused to do at planning commission to be considered by planning commission. That's what I want. And then I want, after planning commission considers those things, these changes that he's talking about now, I want that to come back to us for a vote. That's what I want. So I don't want, I don't want to table it, I want to remand it back to planning commission. So procedurally, how do I get to a point where we can have a vote on that?
So is this a period of discussion, I think? We're still in a period of discussion?
Yep.
So wondering out loud, and guessing or recognizing this may not satisfy everything I've heard you say, Councilor Gibson, is there a way by adding further stipulations of the type we've already done through amendment that ensures or requires the type of dialogue, interaction, maybe specific outcomes? Because my view of it is, if it were to go successfully down the path that's before council now, it still sends something back to planning commission for their review and assurance in the form of a final development plan. I'm just wondering, based on your thoughts and desires, can we continue to stack those things on the laws and the teeth and the requirements of the PD?
Yes, sir.
One of the provisions I think that you've added is that it goes back to planning commission for design...
Final development plan, yes, sir.
Yeah, we put all that in there, Ryan.
What kind of conditions would we need to add to that in order to give planning commission the authority to have a full, the full ability to work with the neighbors and the developer to try to make this plan something that works?
Though planning commission can, I mean, this planning commission shows a great deal of independence, so you can't accuse them of anything but being good in doing that, but they can reject, I mean, they don't have to send it back to, you know, if they're not satisfied, but the idea is that they would continue to work on this.
What Shannon said before is that unless we put certain things in there, they don't have the ability to reject it. And that's the thing, I mean, it becomes, it becomes a matter of right, not of discretion.
Yeah, but see, I don't agree with that. I don't agree with that.
They rejected it once.
No, but I'm saying, but once it comes back, so it's like this, so if we put something in our LMO that says the developer can do something, or this particular area allows for this type of development, that becomes basically a right, so to speak. There's another term for it, but it becomes a right. It becomes something where, if they satisfy certain conditions, then the city, the government, is required to say, okay, yeah, you can go, you can build that, okay? Now, my understanding from what Shannon said before, and then correct me if I'm wrong, Shannon, but my understanding of what she said before is that if we send this back as a planned development, even if it goes back to planning commission, unless we give them certain authority or give them the space in order to do certain things, what they can approve and what they can't approve are much more narrow than what they could look at when it first came before them. Is that right, Shannon?
Okay, so a planned development is the ordinance in front of you. Whatever you approve tonight, unless you make changes to it, is what is considered the regulating plan for that planned development. The architecture as presented is considered the regulating plan unless you make specific changes to it that can then be carried forward. That is the intent of a planned development. That is why planned developments are so tricky because they're so specific as to the regulating plan for the planned development. The planned development does allow for the regulating plan, and in approving a planned development regulating plan and a PD zoning classification, the city council may impose appropriate conditions on the approval.
Which we started to do with his amendments.
You can add conditions of approval. A minor deviation to a PD regulating plan may be approved by the administrator. That's the planning staff. Major deviations of a PD regulating plan, which would significantly alter the basic concept and general characteristics of the PD, shall constitute an amendment to the PD and require approval by the city council in accordance with the amendment procedures established in this ordinance. Examples of major changes may include, but are not limited to, the following: boundary changes, increase in height and density, change in vehicular access or circulation, changes to less restrictive land uses, any change which the administrator determines would significantly alter the basic concept and general characteristics of the PD. A final development plan, the administrator shall review and take action for approval of the final development plan consistent with the provisions of this section, which we asked that you ask the planning commission to do that in this case and not leave it to staff. The final development plan shall be approved if it is in substantial conformance with the PD regulating plan, the statement of intent, and all relevant standards in Article 196 Development and Design Standards, and the Design and specification manual.
Okay, I make, I have a motion. I want a motion to amend the main motion to include that the planning commission approves the final development plan, not the staff. Those words need to be in there just as they are.
I think that that was already one of the recommend, part of the bundle previously from Councilmember Brazington, because staff had already asked for that.
Okay, however, however, if you want to underline that with unanimous consent, they can, if you'll accept that, Will.
Let it stand alone. If it's final staff conditions, it needs to be pulled out, be directed.
I think that's any objection to...
But the problem, all the changes that we're talking about, giving planning commission the authority to make are major deviations which planning commission will not be able to do. Is that, I mean, that's my, that's my understanding of what you're reading.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, can I have a minute to consult with our city attorney, please?
Yeah, you may. Hey, I was going to say, I'm getting a little messy, people want to take a break. So we'll take a 10-minute break, and everybody can stretch and appreciate that. Thank you.
...
Wait.
I thought this morning this was gonna be a short meeting.
I want to remind council, this is a first reading. There's always a second reading and gap in between to clarify, spell out, flesh out a little bit better.
And you said you thought it was gonna be a short meeting?
Mm-hmm.
That's always the jinx.
Yep. See, all I saw was annex. I was like, oh, it's not.
Can, can we take those in one, in one bundle?
All we're talking about is annexations. Those will be quick. Listen, good luck.
Shannon, I'm very disappointed I'm missing bedtime.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's.
Thank you, was big, facetious.
Hopefully Sunny's not here, not listening.
We are ready. Lillian and I once attended a school board meeting, the subject of which was, will the school district give us the land upon which the baseball stadium sits today?
Yep.
And it was a meeting that went on past midnight. Seriously, the school board met past midnight, all kind of matters. And Lily and I were sitting there and after, and also Councilmember Diane Smock was with us and she turned, her birthday was the next day. So we paused to wish her a happy birthday at 12:01. And to add to the mystery, at 12:30 or so after midnight, the school board finally voted and by, I want everyone to notice, a one vote margin approved, allowing the city greenble to take that land, to have that land, buy that land upon which the baseball stadium sits.
You're, you're not making a prediction, are you?
Oh, no, no, no. Okay. Shannon, you were saying, or maybe the city attorney was saying, I'm not sure who was. We have, um, we have the motion in the, as amended, which goes back to the planning commission with lots of that stuff that, that Shannon described.
Correct. There, there was a, a question about a potential, um, other route that we have eliminated with the main motion that's on the floor by Councilmember Stahl.
Yeah.
And then she, then I had a question regarding, um, what kind of restrictions would we need to put on this to give planning commission as much authority? And that's when she asked for a break.
Correct. I was trying to figure out if there was a path to, if you were to vote for it on first reading and remand it back to planning commission between first and second reading for further review. But the city attorney and I talked about it and that is not permissible under the rules. So that was why I asked for the break, Councilmember Gibson, was just to see if we had that as an option.
Okay, so, so any conditions that we wanted, we would need to put on it and we could do that between this reading and the next?
Or the second, or the second reading.
You can add, you can add conditions both on this, any, any amendments that are added tonight or conditions would be in the ordinance that would be presented to you at second reading. Um, and then you can always make changes again at second reading.
If it went back to planning commission, you know, keep it in the cooker, make the sausage a little longer, then would it ultimately come back to us again?
Yes, um, but the only way I think that you could do that is that the original motion would have to be rescinded. Then a new motion to remand it back to planning commission would be then a motion that could be made and voted on. At this point, you cannot turn, return it back to planning commission. And that was the question I had for the city attorney during the break was at this point, it is, you can take first reading, you can make any changes or conditions you want. It would go to second reading. You can also make any changes or conditions you want. And then the final development plan would return back to planning commission.
But it'll never come back to us?
Not once you get past second reading, that is correct.
Second reading, yeah. Ronnie, well, y'all.
That's the only procedural way I know how to do this.
City attorney, can you?
The who?
Whoever made the motion.
I can't remember who made the seconded it.
He seconded.
It was Will and, um.
Will made the motion.
Will and, um, Will, Will and.
The motion was made by. The motion was made. The motion was made by Stahl, seconded by Brazington.
Okay.
So Stahl would have to rescind and Brazington would have to rescind.
Okay, we have the, we have the, okay, at this point though, we have that, where, where we are, um, in front of us for, the amended motion, um, is before us. There are no other comments. We're gonna vote on that. Clerk call the roll.
It's on it.
As amended, as amended by Mr. Brazington, yeah.
Councilmember DeWorke?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming? Councilmember Gibson?
No.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
No.
Mayor White?
Aye. I hope we can, um, continue to pursue the, what I'll call the Allen Mitchell Plan. And I have a couple of questions for, um, Mr. Schick, which I'll add later on, some ideas on how to reduce cost in this project, which could help us a lot in terms of reducing the size and scope. Have an idea I want to talk to you, in particular having to do with parking in the West End. We, we have a great desire to have parking in the West End and whether or not if the city provided some assistance on your parking garage, whether that would provide some opportunity to address scale. It was a couple of months ago, we were scrambling around trying to find a way to increase some parking in West End and we were, you know, where to go, where to go. And seems to me this is a good opportunity, but we can do it here, in which case, uh, might make for a better project.
That, that would have to come before council though, right?
Yeah, it would. I just wanted to throw that out in a public meeting because I think it's an important point. We really do need parking down there. All righty, thank you. This will come back to the second reading. 15B.
An ordinance to annex approximately 1.57 acres of real property and 0.121 acre of adjacent right-of-way located at Churchill Circle and to provide the zoning designation of R9.
Move to remand.
You're, you're a quick study, sir.
Don't dare. A motion, please.
Motion's second. Clerk, we'll call the roll. Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. 15C.
An ordinance to annex approximately 0.197 acre of real property and 0.053 acre of adjacent right-of-way located at East Pine Lake Circle and to provide the zoning designation of RM2.
So moved. Second. Motion's second. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. 15D.
An ordinance to annex approximately 0.221 acre of real property and 0.061 acre of adjacent right-of-way located at West Pine Lake Circle and to provide the zoning designation of RM2.
Second, okay, clerk, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke? Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. Wait, no, wait, all this couldn't be put in one ordinance, sir. 15E.
An ordinance to annex approximately 0.417 acre of real property and 0.144 acre of adjacent right-of-way located at West Pine Lake Circle and to provide the zoning designation of RM2. I need a motion, second, please.
Motion and second, clerk, call the roll.
Okay, I'm sorry. Clarity here, who's my motion?
Second.
Thank you, thank you. Councilmember DeWorke?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington? Councilmember Stahl? Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. 15F.
An ordinance to annex approximately 9.079 acres of real property and 0.068 acre of adjacent right-of-way located at Churchill Circle and to provide the zoning designation of R6.
Okay. Motion is second?
Second.
Second, clerk, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. 15G.
An ordinance to annex approximately 12.261 acres of real property and 0.288 acre of adjacent right-of-way located at Ridge Road and to provide the zoning designation of RM2.
So move.
Second, but I have a question.
Okay.
Sorry. This is a biggie. 12.2 acres.
Yes.
Wooded, from what I could see, pretty much wooded. What fire station covers this land? I don't need a long answer, chief. I just need a thumbs up, we're good. 12 more acres to cover of wooded areas, okay? That's all.
All right. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. G, or is it H?
H?
An ordinance to annex approximately 1.727 acres of real property located at 210 Thurgood Drive and to provide the zoning designation of S1.
Second, motion's second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. Aye, 15N.
An ordinance to annex, um, ordinance to annex approximately 0.08 acre of real property located at Lawrence Road and to provide the zoning designation of S1.
So move.
Second, motion's second.
With no worries about the fire on this one, it's .08 acres. We got this.
Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. Okay.
Mayor, a moment, if I may, just to thank the planning staff for their continued hard work and efforts on annexation. You all gave us a charge a year ago. At every meeting, we are coming forward with you all for annexations. And I cannot thank the planning staff for their efforts enough, um, and what they're doing to support you all in those efforts.
26 acres, thank you.
Manager said that Jay is to be postponed. He's got some more work he wants to do on that. Okay. Okay, 15K.
An ordinance to appropriate $233,918 in the Capital Projects Fund to recognize SCDOT revenues for the Haywood Road Sidewalk Project.
Second.
Motion's second, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl? Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye, okay.
Two slides, two slides. Next slide, please. Three slides, sorry. Uh, little connectivity map dealing with the paperclip project. Just wanted to reiterate that there is connectivity to the existing Swamp Rabbit Trail, um, system as is without the pedestrian bridge, as we talked about, uh, last time I was here. But we are underway on the pedestrian bridge project. Next slide. Uh, survey is mostly complete. We have a couple more points to grab. Geotech should be completed, uh, late September and 30% drawings for review and flood wave modeling should be done mid-October.
All right, go back. What, which bridge?
Would be a new bridge over the.
But in the meantime, you're doing the red bridge.
Yeah, so the, the red, the red one is actually an aggregate crossing and it'll tie into existing pathways and existing aggregate crossing with the stone bridge on the south side of the drawing there.
Thank you, Kaylin, and thank you, city manager.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, be more discussion, I'm sure, ahead. Thank you very much. A meeting adjourned.